Maybe Forrest or Ross could if take a look at what is threatened by prior zoning and entitlements and opportunities for connections that we might make still to preserve what's left. So, yeah, thanks.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I was just gonna say the same thing, that the ELAP staff could be a valuable resource in this endeavor. And, you know, I'll point out that, you know, if we identify some areas, you know, perhaps that the county would want to make an offer on. I know, I'm sure that we have some lands in the area that are already on the ELAP approved list. You know, that could certainly turn into a tremendous asset for that growing community in terms of providing for walking trails and things like that, so.
Members, what's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White to approve item E4. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just have one more question about this. I just wanted to know, it's modified development type in parcel B from commercial to town homes. Can somebody address that just a little bit more specifically?
The development standards are being amended to reflect what the town home development standard would be. It's not proposed to be, you know, an additional entitlement. It's proposed to work within the entitlements that were approved as part of the planned development. It's just switching out the land use regulations to recognize a change in use.
Okay, I'll...
I'm sorry, if you give me more detail, we could provide a more specific response.
So there were, if you, I'm still not quite understanding, and maybe I can just go through this with you outside of here, but, so there were entitlements to be either town home or commercial?
Correct.
And so they're just doing a greater, they're looking at a greater percentage of town home than they originally had, is that it?
Well, yes, ma'am, it would give way to that because it's not gonna have the commercial entitlement utilizing that acreage on their site.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner, just for the...
Yeah.
It's not increasing the total number of residential units allowed in the PD.
Right.
Changing the location where already approved units can go in that particular pod.
Okay, thank you.
So it wouldn't give way to additional entitlements, it would just, the acreage would give way to a different land use. So I'm sorry if I misspoke, but...
No, that's how I understood, and I just wanted to be clear, thanks.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White to approve item E4. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries 60-0.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. Along with the presentation of the overview for E5, we're also gonna be handing out an amended condition. This has to do with a 20-lot planned development that is located on 2204 and 2208 South St. Cloud Avenue. Commissioners, this is a change primarily to the lot size, but also to the access that's located to the south. The cross-access point that was required in the original PD has given way to surrounding development that doesn't allow that access to occur. The areas where that access would be provided to are allotted, and it doesn't have an opportunity for that. Additionally, what the applicant's proposing is an increase in lot size from 7,000 to 7,200, no increase in the number of lots, but an increase in the lot size with a corresponding adjustment in lot width and setbacks. The setbacks are being reduced primarily, the width is being reduced from 75 to 60, the front yard setback is being reduced from 20 to 10, it's providing for a 15-foot side yard. The setback for the side is being reduced from seven and a half to five, and then it will provide for 10-foot on corner lots and the project perimeter in corner lots. I mentioned that cross-access is going away, and the rear yard setback is being reduced from 25 to 20. Overall, staff felt that the changes in the PD were keeping in, you know, within the spirit of the approved planned development that was approved back when it was initially adopted. We are recommending approval with conditions.
Is the applicant here? Good morning, have you been sworn in?
Good morning, yes, I have been sworn in. My name is Sean Cashin, 13825 Ico Boulevard, Clearwater, Florida. I'm representing the applicant. As Mr. Moreta said, there are some minor revisions, primarily the lot depth reducing from 75 feet to 60, although there is a corresponding increase in the minimum lot area of 7,000 to 7,200 square feet. The side setbacks are proposed to be reduced from seven and a half to five. Although we are reducing the rear setback from 25 to 20, there is a corresponding 10-foot wide landscape vertical buffer, which we are proposing along the northwest and south boundaries to consist of a six-foot-high opaque fence in addition to 10-foot-high trees, three-inch caliper that will be on 40-foot centers. I'm here to answer any questions, but before that, I do have my client here, and he wishes to make a brief statement. Thank you.
Good morning, sir, have you been sworn in?
Good morning, yes, sir, I've been sworn in. My name is William Sullivan. I'm at 1350 Orange Avenue, Suite 201, Winter Park, Florida, 32789. I just wanted to address the, wanted to thank the community in the area. We met with all the adjacent property owners, at least reached out to all the adjacent property owners. We have a petition that's signed by seven of the adjacent property owners, and we tried to reach out to everyone we could, so. It's already, the petition's already been part of the record, but I am going to kind of show you a neighborhood map of the area that we've reached out to. The green are the ones that signed the petition, the yellows are the ones we actually were able to speak with, and then the ones in the dots are the ones we left information at the door with a note for them to call back. Thank you.
You, that's it? Applicant?
Yes, yes, sir, sorry.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Any proponents to speak on item E5? Any proponents to speak on item E5? Any opponents? Opponents? Applicant, you wave your time?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll move approval, but I also wanted to thank you. That's one of the most clear contact visual visuals I've ever seen, so thank you for that, I think that was good.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Murman to approve item E5. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us into the Riverview South Shore area. This is personal appearance 19-0314. This planned development was approved for 216 dwelling units. It's approximately 81 acres in size. There are no changes proposed to any of the dwelling units or the related standards. This change is in relation to a buffer on a roadway that's gonna serve as a north-south collector road. And actually, this roadway has some relevance to the next three petitions that we're gonna talk about, so in advance of those petitions and part of this discussion, I'll go ahead and let Brian Grady put that up on the overhead and show you where that particular roadway is relative to this site to provide some context. The roadway that Brian's gonna be pointing out is a requirement of this PD to work through this and as well as some others. What the applicant is proposing is to eliminate the screening that was required along the roadway. The screening is gonna be provided along the areas where the internal lots would view the roadway from. The area where the screening is being eliminated is on the external side of the road. What that screening would be giving way to in terms of not providing visual protection is a project that's essentially, or land area that's essentially occupied by wetlands. That area at some point, we anticipate, will be developed, but we don't anticipate that the elimination of that buffer area, given the distance and the type of existing acreage area that will not give way to much development in that area, those things in total, we feel, would ameliorate the need for that buffer roadway. Additionally, when that buffer was imposed on the site, when it was initially zoned back in 2006, the discussion was largely about preservation of a rural area. The context of this area, although it's not fully shown on the acreage, has significantly changed with the hospital and several planned developments that are either approved or in a state of being developed now. So staff is recommending approval of the elimination of that element of the screening along the roadway, which will be residing along the eastern portion of the road. Again, the western area of the road and the perimeter will be maintained, so all the lots in internal of the subdivision will have a screening that was anticipated by the planned development. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, before we get into the public hearing, Commissioner White wants a question. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
I have kind of an unorthodox request, so I would need, obviously, board approval, but I wanna look to staff and see if it would even be legal to do this. Since E6, E7, and E8 are so closely related, is it possible to just hear the staff report on those three items, have the public hearings on those three items, and then take the vote on the three items at the end? Even if the votes are separate, we wouldn't have to vote on all three at one time.
The applicant has requested, though, that items E6 and E7 be discussed together and E8 separately. The applicant's representative feels that there are more issues that are distinct to E8, and it would be better to discuss that one on its own, but what you described, yes, can be done, certainly for 6 and 7, is the board's pleasure.
I'd like to move that we hear staff presentations on E6 and E7, followed by the public hearings on the two, and then a vote.
Let me ask a question, but we vote on them separately?
Yes, vote on them separately.
Okay, I don't think we need a motion for that. Okay, okay.
Okay, sure.
Is applicant here? Want to discuss E6 and E7?
Yes, sir.
Can you do it in 15 minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They're very similar. Elise Batzel with Phelps Dunbar, 100 South Ashley Drive, Suite 1900. Here on behalf of the applicant, we do have some materials to submit for the record, and we're gonna go ahead and streamline these two, show some visuals of how each of them sort of interconnect.
Stop the clock, minute. Because you're doing both of them?
I'm happy to do them separate if it...
No, no, I'm gonna give you a little bit more time.
Okay.
You're supposed to have 15 minutes each.
I will be far more efficient than that, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So for the initial E6, this property is located in South County. It's about 70 acres. It's generally located south of Big Bend Road and east of I-75 within the urban service area. The future land use, as you can see on the next slide, is SMU 6, and all of the area around is SMU 6. That's particularly important in the next two items because of the evolving nature of this community, as Joe has already said, from rural to suburban use. The property is currently zoned PD under O6-1147 for 216 single-family attached dwellings. The very first request, so there's two requests for each of these items. The very first request is the removal of the portion of the buffer along the eastern side of the north-south collector roadway. And the second request relates to the timing of the installation of the buffer. We'll get there. If you look at the two exhibits on the screen, you'll see that originally, there was a buffer along the roadway, along the entire length of the north-south collector roadway. If you look at the picture to the right, you'll see that on either side of that northern portion, there's ponds and there's open space that already buffer the adjacent residential outside of the PD. Change to the next one. You can see it a little more clearly here, both to the north and to the east, and we're maintaining the buffer along the western portion of the roadway, which is adjacent to the intended future residential use. That's a 20-foot vegetative buffer with shade trees and shrubs. The second modification is actually something that came up from a practical concern. Our client is obligated to construct this north-south roadway, and what we realize is because of the phased timing of this development, we're gonna put in a roadway, and there's a requirement that we put in a buffer, at which time we'll have no utilities to irrigate, and so we're gonna put these trees and shrubbery in, and they're gonna die. And so this request is really intended to protect the viability of that installed vegetative material, and it allows the buffer to be installed later at the time of site development, when the utilities will already be coming to the site, and they can be properly irrigated at that time. With your permission, I'll quickly go to the next item to be efficient. This is 147 acres located in South County. It's directly north of the prior item, so they sit right on top of each other. Again, within the urban service area and generally located south of Big Bend and east of I-75. It is also completely surrounded by SMU 6 and is part of an existing zoning, planned development O6-1687, which is approved for 203 single-family attached dwellings. Just as an aside, we did get a call from one of the neighbors on this item, and the concern was that we were changing entitlements rather than doing modifications to buffers. So I did explain that and didn't hear anything back, but just wanted to let you know that. Again, we're removing a portion of the buffer along the eastern side of that north-south collector roadway, and you can see in this particular exhibit that along the buffer, particularly along the eastern boundary, there's a pretty significant pond and open space. If you go to the next slide, it's a little helpful. Thank you, Kevin. So the pond and open space includes 19.4 acres, and as part of that 19.4 acres, one of the existing conditions in the PD requires an additional buffer on that eastern side. So there's lots of buffering to the adjacent residential here. The next slide shows up particularly well. Thank you to staff for putting this together, because I just plagiarized your exhibit. And again, the timing issue is the same on this. I'll conclude for those two. Those are the two modifications that we're asking for each of those items, to reduce the buffer in the areas that aren't adjacent to residential, and to change the timing so that the, it can be properly irrigated when utilities are at the site. We're available for any questions that you may have on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did that, both of them, and less time than you needed. Okay. We're going to take up item E7 and E8 for public hearings. Does anyone, any proponents to speak on item E7 and E8? E6 and E7. Any proponents? Any opponents on items E6 and E7? Any opponents? Applicant, you wave your time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to take up item E6 first. There's a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Murman to prove... Yes, sir.
I want to pick on this.
Are you, you gonna speak in favor or against? On E6?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
You gonna speak in favor or against the item E6 or E7?
The item, E7.
Okay, come on, sir. Have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
Please state your name.
My name is Woodrow Wadsworth. I live at 6713 Simmons Loop in Riverview, right across from this planned development. My concerns with eliminating the barrier, you're gonna open these ponds up to public access, which means lots of children that'll have access to those ponds inside and outside that development, plus the cars that's gonna be coming down that four-lane road. So my contention is, there needs to be a barrier between the ponds and the road, which is a responsibility of the developer. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Applicant, you have five minutes.
So in particular with this item, our intent, of course, is that the pond act as an extension of the buffer from the residential. The roadway is gonna access as a collector roadway for folks coming down the road. If you look at the original staff report, and you read through the original staff report, and Adam and Joe can probably collaborate on this, the intent wasn't to keep children out or an issue of some kind of buffer or barrier. It was a visual protection for the neighbors, so they didn't have to see the roadway. And so the function of this was not a barrier. There's no walls, gates, or any physical barrier other than vegetative shrubbery that was ever intended. So we're available to answer additional questions if you have them.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Is the slope of the pond gonna be such that it causes any safety issues? Will it trigger a fence or anything like that?
Commissioner, if the slope of the pond, I believe, is four to one or greater than a fence is required, so we have independent standards that depending on the slope of the pond will dictate whether a fence is required or not.
Do you have any idea what your slope's gonna be yet at this point?
We don't...
It will definitely meet code. We're not that far in site design, to be honest with you, at this point. You know, we have conceptual drawings, but no engineering drawings have been prepared at this time. I mean, if the code requires some sort of barrier to those ponds, the applicant and developer will absolutely install those at that time.
And I think that's important to the discussion at hand, because if you're driving the roadway and you have a nice unfenced pond with the buffer that they propose to keep behind it as a backdrop, I think that's one thing versus a pond that's gonna be fenced. I mean, I've seen how some of these end up looking, you know, especially over time. You know, I'm one that likes to look 20, 25 years down the road, so, you know, maybe when you get to a point someday when certainly the developer's out of there, you know, you may or may not have an HOA that's gonna stay on top of it, you know, so that can be important, that can be important with respect to whether or not a buffer should be required to remain on, I believe it was the east side of that conceptual road, if I'm not mistaken.
Commissioner White, may I address that point?
Absolutely.
So when you're driving down the roadway, I mean, there are code provisions in place that require the maintenance of certain property, and obviously, if the landowner doesn't do that properly, they can be cited for code enforcement violations, and we certainly hope that they will maintain their property. But when you're driving down the road, at least for me individually, and I know in a lot of other people, when you're driving down the road, it is kinda nice to see open spaces and ponds. I mean, it adds to sort of the suburban mixed use of that area that we're, and that's what we're trying to do in your comprehensive plan, you want those mix of uses. So you wanna see residential, you wanna see open spaces, and I think it actually adds to that rather than detracts from it, being able to look out and see ponds and open spaces, which I think are quite beautiful.
You know, it would be nice if the board could take a look at this request for changes to this particular buffering at such time that we know what the storm, I assume the pond's gonna be a stormwater pond?
Yes, Commissioner, and it looks like it's on both sides of the road, it's proposed to be pond.
And that's...
It is a function, it's actually a stormwater technical manual that prescribes those fencing requirements based on the pitch, so it is something that is, depending on the characteristics of the site, within the design control of the pond.
Yeah, and that's applicable to both items E6 and E7, correct?
I believe so. Believe so, yeah. Yes, Commissioner?
You're done?
Well, you know, I think the gentleman that's here brings up a good point. You know, it would be nice if the board could revisit this, you know, maybe after the stormwater technical plans have been developed and approved, but, you know, I mean, if the votes aren't there, then, you know, clearly, then, you know, I'm not gonna die on the sword on this issue. I think the gentleman that's here brings up a good point, though.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I would think that the market would pretty much dictate that you want it to be visually appealing and that it won't, that you'll do what you can, and I can't imagine that you're gonna have a stormwater retention or a water feature that will be, have a fence around it, and that you'll make sure that that, I just can't imagine in these newer developments that that will happen. I do appreciate the gentleman's point about children in a busy road. I think that that is becoming ubiquitous in so many areas and, you know, not to be handled by a shrubbery barrier. I appreciate that point, too, but I think we do need to, as a commission, I think we're have a growing sensitivity to how we develop and how these things are put forward, so I appreciate the gentleman's point, and I think we have to just be mindful of what we can do strategically in the future in terms of developing in a way that makes walking safe for everyone, so.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp, you originally made a motion. Does it still stand?
Yes.
Commissioner Murman, you seconded, it still stand? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Murman to approve item E6. E6. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries 7-0.
Now, we're on item E7.
Item E7.
There's a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Murman to approve item E7. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries 7-0.
Item E8. For the Commissioner Sullivan.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item E8, personal appearance 19-0318, located on the west side of US Highway 301, approximately 800 feet south of Simmons Loop Road. There's a TECO area that is adjacent to the site along the northern property boundary. This site, it just, it butts 301 on the west side. The applicant is proposing some adjustments to the development options. There's no new entitlements. This is just redistributing the entitlements where they will occur in pocket one, and I'm sure, I believe the applicant's gonna provide these areas, but Michelle Heinrich also has areas that she can provide orientation to as well, but they're essentially along the area of 301 to south of the TECO easement in the graphic on the staff report. And the applicant is also proposing to make access along the northern property boundary. Right now, there's optional access, there's two optionals and one emergency access. The applicant is proposing to make two of those a required access and maintain, make those two access requirement along the northern property boundary, and the yellow indicates where those access points will intend to be providing connectivity in the future. In terms of the redistribution entitlements, essentially what's going on is to add a development option to provide a third development option, which provide, add single-family in the pocket one, introduce more multifamily product flexibility in that pocket. It will boost the numbers in that mix from 295 to 420. Overall, the project is already approved for 600, and there isn't any increase in any of those numbers, it's just a redistribution of where this is gonna occur within the various development options. Staff has reviewed it and is recommending approval with conditions.
Is the applicant here? Good morning again.
Elise Batzel, Phelps Dunbar, 100 South Ashley Drive, representing the applicant. This property is located just slightly to the south and the east of the last property that we just discussed. It's a little more unique in what's being requested this morning, so I did wanna take time to review that one separately. It's about .23 miles north of Paso El Mar Boulevard. The future land use is also SMU 6. You'll see that there is R4 to the east and SMU 6 all around. This is located directly on 301. The current zoning is PD 18-0661. For some of you, you may remember the site that came before you last year. The minor modification request that we bring to you this morning is to add a third development option, and I'll explain that... and I'll explain that a little more significantly. But the idea is to shift density towards 301, away from Little Bullfrog Creek. Allow the developer to have the option to shift that density if required by the market. And also, we are, in conjunction with the board's desire to know where access points are going to be, we are eliminating optional access points along the north and making those required access points. The project is 102.5 acres. As you heard, it's SMU 6. It is within the urban service area. There's two current development options that are permitted. There's a mix of retail, commercial, single-family, and single-family detached uses. Each pocket, which we'll look a little more specifically, allows a maximum density. And there is a cap of 600 units overall. We are not changing the number of units. We're just asking that those development entitlements can be shifted around within the pockets. You can go two, actually. So this shows you, there's three distinct pockets. Pocket 1, which is currently approved for commercial and/or multifamily with a retail component. We're trying to shift potential density from Pocket 3 and Pocket 2 towards Pocket 1. There's been an interest from multifamily developers along this 301 corridor, consistent with many of the developments that you've probably seen up and down 301. Pocket 1 specifically is what we're asking for in this new option, which would be Option 3. We're asking for 420 multifamily or single-family attached. That's a not-to-exceed number. It does have access to Highway 301. And if you notice, there's quite a substantial pond and open space to the south, which would buffer the southern property from this development. Pocket number 2 remains as it currently is in the PD. That's no more than a maximum of 140 detached single-family lots. As you can see, it's north and east of Little Bullfrog Creek. And that little arrow is a pedestrian access point, which allows pedestrian connectivity between the two pockets. Because of the natural waterway, vehicular access isn't possible between those two pockets, but we have provided that bridge in order to establish pedestrian activity. That's existing in the PD. Pocket 3, as you will see, is a maximum of 180 single-family attached units or 180 single-family detached. Obviously, if a lot of that density is shifted towards 301, we won't be able to physically, you know, put that many in these pockets. But they allow some flexibility depending on the market. Access to this Pocket 3 is very interesting. This is already in the PD, but just to give you the scope of what's already been approved, this access is adjacent to an existing PD that will be required to continue that roadway south. If the roadways will align, so Pocket 3 will not be able to be developed until that happens. So it'll be restricted to pond, open space, until the PRS to the west is approved. Compatibility. So this increase in multifamily units here to potentially 420 in this pocket, it's really buffered on all sides. If you look to the north, there's an existing TECO power line there. So that's automatically a natural additional buffer that's there from whatever may or may not be developed to the north. To the south, there's a significant amount of open space and pond, as well as a TECO parcel. So we already have a natural setback there based on the approved site plan. Modification 2 is simply to eliminate the optional from the access points to the north. As Michelle already showed you on the Elmo, these will align naturally with the roadways if and when development occurs to the north. The increase in height in Pocket 1 from 50 to 60, that really just allows the units to be concentrated in Pocket 1. SMU 6, the future land use category, seeks to promote growth and seeks to maximize densities within these areas. And so within Pocket 1, adding that additional height will allow that density to be concentrated more towards 301. And the site, in addition, is constrained by Little Bullfrog Creek, which is that natural waterway. And to avoid impacting that creek, you know, the shift helps protect the natural waterway. There is a limit and a new condition, which would limit the height in this pocket to four stories and no more than 60 feet. We did provide, for the record, which you probably have in your huge books of papers, a variety of multifamily developments that are at least four feet and 60 feet in height up and down that 301 corridor. So we do believe it's consistent with what's already been approved. We aren't asking for any new development entitlements. Option 3, which is the new option, includes uses that are already permitted. Again, it's just shifting development entitlements. This does promote the intent of the SMU 6 future land use goals. And we have heard the board, and we have eliminated the optional access points to the north. We are available for any questions you may have at this time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I have three members in the queue. Are you wanting to ask questions now or after the public hearing?
I just wanted to ask for a point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say pedestrian, is it pedestrian bicycle?
I don't know the answer. Steve, do you know? Yes, pedestrian and bicycle.
I assumed it was. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item E8, that is a proponent? Any proponents addressing item E8? Any opponents addressing item E8? Any opponents addressing item E8? Petitioner, applicant, you waive your time?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes. I'm very familiar with this area. It's right south of the hospital. And it makes a lot of sense to me to be moving multifamily housing to 301 as this, we get more and more hospital workers in that area. But there'll be a wide range of hospital workers. And I want to just make the point to my fellow commissioners, and maybe you would have a comment on this. If we had, now, we are very concerned with affordable housing for nurses and the kinds of technicians and other hospital employees that will be there. If we had had that foresight when we were approving 600 and something units here, we might have made some conditions to make sure that a portion of this was going to be affordable, housing for workforce housing. Do you have any comment? I mean, this is not something we can ask for at this time.
No, no, I understand. To be honest with you, we didn't think about that with respect to this particular development. The way that this change happened was we actually had apartment developers come with an interest in this site. And we thought, wow, under the existing development entitlements, we really do need more density closer to 301, given the product that they want to build. We will take a note of that, though, for future developments. I know that when we used to have larger DRIs, and the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council was looking at affordable housing, and they would have affordable housing in the entire area, a lot of that was thought through. Now that all of those responsibilities are shifted to the county, and to be honest, the county staff is sort of, all of a sudden, the legislature said, here, it's yours. It's one of those things that I'm sure it's going to take time for the county to work through that. But as developers and as representative developers, we will be mindful of that in the future.
Yes, and if you were going to come forward with any more modifications of this, these holdings in this area, I would certainly be looking for assurances that we were going to incorporate some mix of affordable housing and mix of income levels in especially multifamily housing in this area.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good question, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. Good comments, Commissioner Smith. And I do believe staff is working on, still working on, incentive package for these type of developments. So I expect to see that hopefully in the budget this year. But I just want to make a brief comment. I am really happy to see some multifamily housing going up. Be honest with you, we need to kind of shake things up. It looks like a box factory if you fly over South County. And multifamily housing will really kind of start to change the complexion of the area. And I hope that we see more of that and mixed in with the commercial. So again, we're working towards live, work, and play. So I really want to thank you for doing that. And it really caught my eye, and I thought it was a good move.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. That was my next point. I've noticed that Pocket 1 is multifamily and then retail and commercial development. It's critically important that we have people be able to walk to the local little store or somewhere within the communities, especially when you get the density of multifamily. So I'm understanding that within this zoning, we get the opportunity for a mix of residential and commercial to have people not necessarily have to get in the car to go to the grocery store. So I'm pleased to see that, and I want to thank you very much for the additional access points. You know, we need to be able to create that opportunity so people can kind of stay in their community as they live, work, and play and shop. And so I'm pleased to see this kind of opportunity explored here. But to your point about the affordable housing, we'll get there. We're going to ramp up for this. So I'm looking forward to seeing where we can sort of target many of these kinds of projects where we have an allocation towards affordable housing. So thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Smith for her comments. I think they were very well taken. I do think this is a, and Commissioner Merman, this is a good place and it is good to see multifamily housing right at this spot. That will do. You know, I look forward to doing a more aggressive affordable housing policy and program. But in itself, just making the offer of the multifamily housing will provide some opportunity for people to access it when it's not there now. So I support this project and think it's good that we're seeing it move forward.
Members, what's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp and Smith to approve item E8. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item E9. It's a modification to a planned development that's located in Baum along, just north of 672, along a local road by the name of Dupree Road. Commissioners, this planned development has a pocket that has four acres. Those lots are, right now, the setbacks are calibrated to a front-rear orientation in terms of the lot setbacks that are oriented to be east and west. What the applicant is proposing is that those setbacks be calibrated in a north-south fashion in order to allow the arrangement of the homes to recognize the easement as their front yard. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. This affects four dwelling units and does not include any recognition of new entitlements. And these are all single-family product. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Michael Horner, for the record, 14502 North Dale Mary B Highway, Tampa, Florida. This is a difficult case, Commissioners, because my client is a small builder. These lots were platted years ago, and the lots were platted 330-foot deep by 150-foot wide. No one anticipated the time of that plat filing, nor the time of my client's acquisition of these lots, that the orientation would be east-west for the front rear and not north-south. If you take the front and rear setbacks of 50-foot each, front and rear, and subtract that from the width, that leaves you a building footprint of only 50 feet. We produced numerous sketches and plans to staff indicating we really cannot build these lots sideways. Those houses have to have a front-rear orientation north-south. Staff's interpretation was the easement is not your front. The roadway, Dupree Road, is your front when you have an easement access. So unfortunately, my client was stuck in this vortex in the last six months. He has obligations. He's got septic tank permits out there. His plans have been approved, but they can't get signed off for building permits until the setback issue is resolved. We filed a variance request. It was then morphed into this PRS. Notifications went out. I think, if I can paraphrase the response, why do you have to do this? Who wants to build a house east-west? But I get the staff interpretation of the LDC. My client has contract purchase agreements in place. He just wants to build four homes, as promised. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Seeing no questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Any proponents wishing to speak on item E9? Yes, sir. Come forth and state your name. And let me know if you've been sworn in.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Robert Tate. I'm the owner of the four lots. We bought these six, seven months, well, last July, I guess. I've got all four lots sold. I've been waiting since July to obligate our obligations to these people. We have septic tanks pulled. I don't know how you go get a, you know, turn in a plat and they approve it to build the, put a well and a septic tank in, and you come back to build the house and you can't build it. So right now, I'm kind of under the gun to get these people satisfied. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Well, we're still in public hearing. Still in public hearing. Any other proponents wishing to speak on item E9? Any opponents wishing to speak on item E9? You waive your time, applicant?
Yes.
And motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner, everybody? Please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is on the south side of Gibsonson Drive, east of Bramwood Drive. It's a six-and-a-half-acre site. Personal appearance 19-0320. The application is oriented on a six-and-a-half-acre site approximately. This is to adjust the location and footprint of proposed buildings and reduce the maximum number of permitted stories from two to one. The application is related to a site plan that's fairly detailed. Changing that detail was driving the personal appearance. Staff is acceptable with the change of the building reconfiguration for this approximately 100,000-square-foot mini warehouse project, and we are recommending approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Again, Michael Horner, for the record, 14502 North Dale Mary B Highway, Tampa, representing the applicant owner. As Joe mentioned, this is more of a efficiency movement. On behalf of the developer, he's taking five detached buildings, restructuring them back into a three-building orientation. We're removing two stories in the middle, so they're all one-story buildings. Slight adjustments in drive aisles. Don't have any opposition, I'm aware of. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent on item E10? Any proponents? Any opponents wishing to speak on item E10? Seeing none, you waive your time, applicant?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item E10. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
G1, would you amend it? Mr. Moretta?
Yes, sir. That brings us to item H1A, H1B, H1C, and H1D. They're all related items. I can provide a brief overview for some context. H1A is a personal appearance. That personal appearance is to remove a 5.9-acre site from a very large planned development that is being driven by item H1B, which is a rezoning. The rezoning is for a 5.9-acre site, which corresponds to what's being removed out of the site plan for H1A. The rezoning is being proposed for 117 single-family product and 7,500 square-foot offices. That site has split zoning, so five of the acres is coming out of the PD. The other part of the site, the rezoning, is zoned AR. Both those sites also have some relationship to item H1C and H1D. H1C is a corresponding South Shore DRI amendment to recognize the five-acre adjustment that is being taken out pursuant to H1A and the rezoning. And then item H1D is a related vacating petition to vacate road right-of-way that bifurcates the rezoning parcel. The rezoning parcel, I would add, is proposing connectivity opportunity to the north and will cross and combine that area of the PD as well. Staff is recommending approval of all these items. Typically, each of these have a presentation of their own, including a vacating petition presentation by the real estate department. The PRS- The PRS, the vacating petition, and the DRI, those are, actually, they're all public hearings. So the board can choose to handle them in the manner they see fit. If they'd like more presentation or, you know, however they feel fit to address them. But they all are public hearings and they can be handled as one bigger item with the vote, as we generally do.
Any objection to handling A, B, C, and D together? Okay. Is applicant here? Has been sworn in, sir?
Yes, sir.
We're going to address all four.
Yes, please. Thank you. Good morning. I'm Kevin Manier with the Genesis Group, and I'm assisting Bel Air Capital in the development of their new project in South County. Property is a little more than 25 acres in size. We're requesting a planned development for 117 single-family detached residential units and 7,500 square feet of business professional office. Access to both will be, remain via the previously approved access to that 24th Street at Hawks Point Court intersection, which would make it a four-way intersection with an emergency access to LJ if necessary. It's three parcels, each with different ownership. One's currently as a residence, the other two for agriculture. As Mr. Moretta has explained, this little project requires four separate petitions, two to take it out of the DRI, one to rezone it, which was heard in December, and then the vacation. The vacation of the right-of-way is for LJ Lane. It's a substandard road. We're basically replacing it with 24th Street, which is a nice, fully constructed four-lane road right to the east of us. So that's, we don't need LJ. We're going to get our access as previously approved on 24th Street. It's a nice little project, completely compatible and identical in development style to all of our surrounding neighbors, and I can answer questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wants you to address items H1A, B, C, and D? Come forth, sir. Have you been sworn in?
No.
Do you swear a firm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Jason Ball, 5802 O'Leary Forest Place. Just wanted to come down and make a quick comment about something. I saw this on the agenda back a few days ago, and it stuck out to me for just the sheer paperwork you're putting these guys through for this project. It's kind of amazing to me. I've talked to some of the Commissioners before in the past about things, about reforming your application processes, that you're raising development costs on these folks trying to build things. This is like a pitch-perfect example of what I'm talking about. I support the motion, just in case you're wondering that part. I just wanted to point out to you that one thing about your whole list here. You're going through this thing over and over, South Shore Plan, South Shore Plan, South Shore Plan. Maybe your community plan for South Shore needs to be updated. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address items? Waive your time, sir? Okay. What's your? There's a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item H1A, B, C, and D.
Commissioner Merman.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I just have a question about H1D. I'm just, I am always concerned about vacating. If we could put up what you're vacating, just if you could show that more clearly for a second.
The yellow area is, I'm sorry, Kathleen Pazon with Real Estate. My name is Kathleen Pazon. I'm with Real Estate. The yellow hashed area is the vacating area.
And I just don't understand why we would surrender any kind of right-of-ways that we have to move people. I'm very concerned about that. I've been talking about that with right-of-way corridors. I understand we have 24th Street there, but I also think we can use that additional right-of-way, and I don't see any reason we should be vacating it.
You want to answer? Yes?
Good morning. I'm Kevin Manier for the applicant. The reason that we're vaca, normally, I'm not a supporter of vacating right-of-way too, but basically 24th replaced it. This is a dead-end road. It's substandard. If you'll look to the south, 24th arches up and avoids LJ and then stubs out on 19. To the north of 19, it's all master planned that that road's going to continue and go all the way up to Big Bend. So that will be the new intersection. So this one little, this road base, LJ has basically been replaced by 24th. So of all the right-of-way in the world, maybe this is the least needed because it's like right next door. But it's basically being replaced by Ford Lane Public Road 24th, just to the east of it.
Are we, will there be at least, I just, it boggles my mind when we would take away right-of-way. I understand what you're saying. I don't know because we don't have information here on what happens when you say it's stubbed out, like if there's access to 224th Avenue. And the other thing I just wonder about in all these cases are pedestrian trail right-of-way because I just don't like to surrender a single, I just think we have so little corridor in all of unincorporated county, we've been undercorridored. And I think it's really caused our, you know, congestion and a loss of opportunity that makes ever really, really doing what we need to be doing. There we go.
Yes, ma'am. I understand completely, but as shown on my area.
Mm-hmm.
All right, can we see it?
You're good.
Yeah, that was, that was a good one.
The one you had.
The one you had was.
The one you had.
But I keep on blocking out. Yeah, there it is. To the south, 24th would have lined up with LJ, but they did not have control of it. So they arched it over to the east and did get it up to 19th. So it's the true connection between all of South Shore and 19th to the north. And that, it's been master-planned to the north of 19. It lines up with the developments to the north of it. So basically LJ's been replaced. It's not like it's been thrown away, but the trail, the sidewalk, the four-lane road, that's a public road, is just slightly arched off to the east.
Yeah, I can see that. I still also would find value in not vacating LJ Road. I just have LJ Lane. I just am not comfortable with that myself. I, that is not something I can support. I can support the other parts of the.
Yeah, LJ today dead-ends to the farm to the south of us. It doesn't, it doesn't go, it's been replaced by 24th.
Right, but we don't know, I mean, it can, it can provide another way for people to move, even if it's a pedestrian trailway.
I appreciate your comment. It was always master-planned for years. South Shore's an approved DRI, and 24th was always master-planned to replace LJ. They should have probably vacated it years ago in all candidness because 24th was its replacement.
Okay. There was a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item H1A, B, C, and D. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us up to another grouping of related items. However, in this item, we have two. Commissioners, what we have before you is a public hearing in a PRS. That PRS, working backwards, starting with item H2B, that plan development is a rather large plan development approved for 384 lots. The plan development itself was approved in a timeframe that predated the Ruskin plan. That plan development has a requirement that says all the perimeter lots need to be 8,000 square feet. The internal lots of that can be 6,000 square feet. As you may know, the Ruskin overlay has a requirement that requires that 20% of the lot in this area be maintained with a 80, with a 20% requirement. However, as I stated before, this particular plan development predated that overlay plan. What the applicant is proposing in this case is to remove the 8,000-square-foot requirement for what they call straddle lots in their application. And what that does is allows two lots, and Israel, can you, can you show the configuration of where geographically it's located? What that does is allows a portion of two of these lots in the area highlighted by red to be, it will provide access for a rezoning that's occurring, which is item H1B, that's occurring to the west, and that the straddle lots essentially will provide acreage that can be used as part of the plan development rezoning to the west that will accommodate that particular development plan. There are two distinct development plans, but they're being organized in a way that will have some unification and access, and also these straddle lots will also have conditions that identify how the entitlements can be used if that acreage is split. The PD itself, which has all approvals and would otherwise be on consent if not for the fact that it's a related item, is being proposed for 18 units. That PD, and Israel, can you highlight the area where the PD is being proposed? This is the related item that's being proposed. That area is approximately 4.6 acres. It has a proposal for 18 dwelling units. It has a 6,000-square-foot requirement on the actual development lots. However, three of the lots, which are in the vicinity of the intersection at the corner, will be required to have 8,000-square-foot lot product. Staff evaluated these two applications and how they're being used in the context of the Ruskin overlay plan. And while the existing PD that's being proposed in the PRS does not have to adhere to the requirement of the Ruskin overlay plan, staff did evaluate it by using a total lot count when combined with the adjacent PD proposal. That total lot count, if added in with 18 units, it goes up to approximately 402 units. The parcel maintain, does not, the rezoning parcel in and of itself is less than 50 acres. So the 6,000-square-foot lot product, if that PD were reviewed specifically in isolation, that particular PD is not required to have a 20% 8,000-square-foot lot product. So the 6,000-square-foot lot product in that particular PD is okay. But when these two sites were reviewed in tandem, bumping the total lot numbers up to 402, what staff identified was, in terms of the 8,000-square-foot product, when combined with that adjacent rezoning, that that actually maintained the 8,000-square-foot lots by half a percentage point. So essentially, it increased it by half a percentage point, and on balance, it was a very similar product that, at least in our opinion, of what would be the outcome of the development proposal that is proposed, that is proposed in the PRS, which is essentially allowed the straddle lots, which could be combined in the adjacent PD, which is being proposed for the rezoning for the 18 lots, which would be inclusive of the 6,000s and the 3,800 square-foot lots that would occur at the corner in the area Israel would show. And again, the access would be provided by the larger PD. So having said that, staff is recommending approval of both these applications. H2B is a public hearing. H2A would otherwise be on consent, and it does have all approvals.
Does you want to answer a question now? Okay. Applicant?
Hello again. Elise Batzel with Phelps Dunbar, 100 South Ashley Drive, Suite 1900. I'm going to go through the main rezoning first so that you understand sort of the scope, and then I'll address the PRS and how the two link. I think it will give you a little bit more context of why we're asking what we're asking for. For PD 18-1486, this property, as Israel noted, is located at the southeast corner of 6th Street Southeast and 16th Avenue Southeast in Ruskin. The future land use of this parcel is R4 all around this area. The zoning, the current zoning, is surrounded right now by PD to the east, ASC 1 to the south, and AS 1 to the west. The proposal on its own is to create 18 single-family lots. Each lot will be a minimum of 6,000 square feet. Each lot will be a minimum of 55 feet in width, and 20% of all of the lots will be 60 feet. In fact, all of them will. So it is compliant with the Ruskin Community Plan Guidelines. We have made a concerted effort in this plan, if you'd go to the next slide, Kevin, to provide connectivity. There are four access points in all directions except for the north to connect this to other developments in the area. There are no gates, walls, or isolating features. Here's where it gets a little bit more interesting and how the PRS plays in. So this PD doesn't require any larger lots. But since we are asking for a PRS to eliminate two lots, we have added three lots in the PD. So we're adding an additional 8,000-square-foot lot to replace the two that we are trying to eliminate in the PRS application. So if you look at this, you'll see that lots 12 and 13, lots 29, they straddle the line. So the idea is that instead of having a PD that you have 6,000 square feet and then you have 8,000 in the middle, and you go back to 6,000, 6,000 square feet, six, then we're taking those out, 8,000-square-foot lots, and shifting them more to the boundary. In fact, if you look at those in red, which is lot 21, 22, and 23, they're actually quite a bit larger than 8,000 square feet just because of the pie-shaped nature. The orientation of the lots, going back to the comprehensive plan and the Ruskin Community Plan Guidelines here, you can see this is conceptual in nature, but probably very close to how it will ultimately be developed. The idea is to continue the connectivity and to allow the access points to function in a grid-like pattern. We do have a recommendation of approval from the zoning hearing master. It is compatible with the surrounding areas, consistent with the character review guidelines and the comprehensive plan. This actually exceeds the requirement of the Ruskin Community Guidelines because we're adding three additional 8,000-square-foot lots, and there is a recommendation for approval. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead right into the PRS so that we can discuss them both.
Yes.
The PRS is 107.5 acres, located, obviously, in Hillsborough County in Ruskin. It is within the urban service area. The future land use in this area, adjacent to the prior rezoning that we just discussed, is also R4. Currently, it's approved for 384 single-family detached dwellings. The minor modification that we're asking for in this PRS is very simple. Number one would be to eliminate the two lots that are eight, the requirement for the two lots along the border to be 8,000 square feet. Again, if you remember, we're adding three in the PD that are not otherwise required, so we're gaining one. And to allow the lots on that common boundary to straddle for just a consistent development across the two. If you go to the next, yeah, thank you, Israel, for this great exhibit so I didn't have to do it. The straddle lots, as you can see along the north, you can sort of see how all of this lays out together. The 8,000-square-foot lots in blue up in the corner functionally add one, which is what Joe was talking about, increasing the percentage of 8,000-square-foot lots, which of course is, you know, furthering the guidelines. What it does is, would allow also the standards to come from one or the other since they straddle. So there is a condition that says the development standards, which are very similar, can be pulled from. pulled from 18-1468 or this PRS. Again, as I said, the effect is really adding an additional 8,000 square foot lot, and the conditions would allow these two lots to be straddled. So with that, I have a feeling, oh, there's one more thing, I'm sorry. Would you go to the next slide, Kevin? This allows an extension of the roadway network in more of a grid-like pattern. It also allows a continuation of the lots along 16th Avenue Southeast to have this consistent development pattern between the two PDs. With that, I'm going to pause and allow you to, because I know you're going to have a lot of questions, and I'll be back up here, so I'll just reserve any additional time.
Do you want to ask a question now?
I will wait for after this.
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wants to address items H2A and H2B? Anyone who wants to address items H2A and H2B? Okay. Close the public hearing. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Yes, this is in the Ruskin Community Plan, and I think everybody knows by now on the board that I was very involved in the Ruskin Community Plan. We worked on that for two years. So it's really important that we honor that in future development as development changes. This, the Ruskin Community Plan has four distinct neighborhoods with different characteristics. This is in our Area 3, which requires, as they've said, that 20% of the lots should be 8,000 square feet, a minimum of 20%, of the lot. So in the large PD, which is allowed 384 lots, 20% of that would be 76 lots at 8,000 square feet. If they combine this somehow with the other rezoning and end up with over 400 lots, 402, 20% would be 80 lots at 8,000 square feet. The proposal is to end up with three lots in the small area, which would be less than 1% 8,000 square feet. But here's the thing, looking at this large, the large PRS, 384 lots, they had two that were 8,000 square feet, and they're changing it to zero. So that's going in the opposite way of the Ruskin Community Plan. It was not compliant, it's now less compliant. They're trying to get, they're trying to get around this by saying that in the small parcel that they're doing at the same time, they're going to put three 8,000 square foot lots. As has been mentioned, that small parcel is less than 50 acres, so the Ruskin Community Plan does not, does not require that to have any 8,000 square foot lots. The 8,000 square foot lots only applies if you're over 50 acres. So we can put three lots over there, but there's nothing that would stop anybody from coming back tomorrow and saying, we'll, we want to take out those 8,000 square foot lots separately from, as long as they leave this in two separate parcels. There's nothing that could prevent a future landowner or applicant from coming back and saying, we don't want those 8,000 square foot lots in the small parcel anymore. The Ruskin Community Plan doesn't require it. Maybe people here by then have forgotten that this was the deal we made. There's really nothing to tie it to that. I think that if they want to build a unified development out of this and have connectivity and have compliance with the Ruskin Community Plan, they should, they should rezone this as one PD, not keep it separate as a little bit over here and a little bit over there that, that we can't, can't make sure it moves forward in compliance with the Ruskin Community Plan. That would be better from a planning perspective to enable the connectivity and move towards more compliance with the Ruskin Community Plan. I mean, the only reason I can think of not to do that, instead of doing these two separate, separate things, is to try to get around the Ruskin Community Plan. So I, I can't support that. The zoning hearing master, when, in looking back through the transcripts, asked if this was compliant with the Ruskin Community Plan and was told yes by the developer's representative. I disagree. It's not compliant with the Ruskin Community Plan, splitting it up like, you know, moving some of the 8,000 square foot lots into this other separate PD, which can come back separately, which we cannot control, does not fix this. It's not moving closer to the Ruskin Community Plan. It's still less than 1% 8,000 square foot lots. So I will not support it. I'll move denial.
There's a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp, to deny. Commissioner?
To, of the large one, of the PRS.
H2B.
Yes.
So you, hold on.
Sorry. My motion is to deny the PRS, because the 190192, because the little one doesn't, is compliant, doesn't matter.
The motion is to deny HB, H2B.
Commissioner Smith, may I address your points?
Pardon? Yes.
Thank you. Can I go to the Almo for a moment? So I'm going to draw. I'm not very good, but. So when we went in for this new development, just so, just let me address one point first. When we, when someone comes back, this is a separate, independent rezoning. When the zoning hearing master said it did comply with the Ruskin Community Plan, she was looking at the 14-1468, 18-1468. It not only complies with the Ruskin Community Plan, it exceeds the requirements of the Ruskin Community Plan for that rezoning. I haven't heard any substantial competent evidence at this point that would indicate that that should be denied. The PRS, the reason that we went back into the PRS is to avoid this, and I'm going to Here, you have all of these larger lots along the western boundary, okay? Obviously, this is not exactly how it's configured, but you get the idea. The idea is you would have 6,000, or 6,000 square feet lots here, then a very odd-shaped 8,000 square foot lot there, and then you have 6,000 square feet. So we can do that under what's existing. The idea was that we would make this more consistent with what staff has asked, which is to be compliant and to look at plans that are established grid patterns, that establish consistent development patterns when we're developing. And so that's what the attempt here is to do. It's, and again, you are gaining an additional 8,000 square foot lot. I know it's just one, but it's better, I mean, it's not as if we're not helping the situation in this particular area. We can, there's, there was no reason for us to add those 8,000 square foot lots under the requirements of the code today, but we did that specifically so that we could make this development here across these two boundaries consistent. Certainly, if you don't allow the PRS, we'll go back and, you know, and reconsider the development options. It just doesn't make good planning sense to do that from a planning perspective. Now, to address what you said about coming back and eliminating the 8,000 square foot lots, when I come in to ask staff to look at, and the Board of County Commissioners, a change in a PD, I always look at what was the original staff report and what was heard at the original hearing. And I know that staff does too, because oftentimes the planners will show me text from the original, that we want to know what was the intent. So I promise you that staff will do that when this, if this ever comes back with those three 8,000 square foot lots. And they, if it's not me and you're not here, they will tell the developer, this is what the board voted on, and this is why these 8,000 square foot lots were put, and this is why they were heard together. That's, you know, it should be the responsibility of every applicant's representative to do that when we come before you. And I know that staff does a very good job in doing that, because one of the things that we have to submit as part of our application is the transcripts from all the prior hearings. I, for one, read every one of those and know why these things were put in place. And so I would hope that that would be the case going forward. Your staff does a great job in that, so I would appreciate it if you would reconsider. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, you wanted, at this time?
Sure. Okay. These questions are for staff. So if this was denied today, specifically to H2B?
Yes.
Is a PD?
H2B would be, it's, it's, it's existing PD. Part of the land is included in H1A rezoning. If the PRS H2B were denied, H2A would have to be amended because it would have land in it that is been denied removal from the PD as it currently stands.
This, I remember when I was going over this in my briefing, and even looking at and studying it, just, it looks like you kind of overcomplicated this thing by, with them the way they are. H2B by itself as a PD could move forward, right? With 6,000 square foot lots. Is that correct?
H2A, H2A is a...
But that's a rezoning to a PD.
Oh, Billy, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I stand corrected. The blended lots, it doesn't require the land. It's giving the opportunity, yes, H2A can move on its own as configured.
And they linked H2A to this so that they could move some of the 8,000 square foot lots over.
Either, either lots, the purpose of the related amendments is so lots could be built that would straddle the PD line and could be allocated to one PD or the other.
Why, then let me just ask you, so you guys really approved this, you signed off on it, and hearing, you know, Commissioner Smith's comments, how did, how does your justification for approval compare to what she said?
I think that our justification was we were looking at this as one combined project, understand the concern that Commissioner Overman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith has raised. The, I believe this project is in some form of development. You were shown a graphic that had some lotting patterns for the rezoning project that is not part of the zoning. So we looked at this as a project that was eminently moving forward to the extent that there were plans developed for that development. And so we did link the two and relied on the lots being added to the rezoning parcel to say that it is moving closer to compliance or not further from compliance to the Ruskin Community Plan from what was approved today. But I understand the concern about the linkage and it not being, there being two separate PDs that can operate separately at some point in the future.
Okay, so, and I understand the community plan, 20% have to be 8,000 square foot lots, which I really love in Ruskin because that's another box city. I mean, it's just full of the same-looking houses down every street, and I hate to make this comment, but if you think the Ruskin Community Plan was adhered to all these years, a lot of that would not have happened, I'll be honest with you. But anyway, that's water under the bridge. But I think at this point, I mean, this is in my district. I understand, I do think the connectivity is very good. I would have liked to, again, I mean, I'm really moving towards multifamily in South County because I think we need to mix it up, and I wish this, I look at this diagram, this is a lot of boxes. And I wish there was something to make it a little bit different. I understand moving 8,000 square foot homes into this area would make it not just adhere to the Ruskin Community Plan, which I know Commissioner Smith says it doesn't, but you're saying within 1/10 of a percent it does. Is that correct?
Looking at the two projects together.
Together.
Saw that it was moving, it was moving closer to the compliance of the plan. We're not saying that the resulting product at all is compliant with the plan. We're looking at it from the standpoint of the existing approved PD that was not compliant. And if we considered the rezoning and the existing PD together with the detractions and added 8,000 square foot lots, the net effect of that was a proportionally greater percentage of 8,000 square foot lots, still short of what the Ruskin guidelines would call for.
By, she says way short, but I think you told me in my briefing, it was like 1/10 of a percent.
It's, it's, it's moving closer to compliance by a small percentage.
By a small percentage, okay. Okay. I, I know, I, I am not going to support the denial. I'm going to wait and hear other commissioners' comments. I think at this point, I would rather see us kind of continue this and let them go back and do some more work on it and bring it back to us, but I'm going to wait and hear some other commissioners' comments before I move forward.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. I'm listening, and I recognize how challenging it is to try and put an old plan and a new plan all together. But I, I did, I was curious in, you know, because I'm all about the connectivity, the, in the illustration of the big project versus the new smaller project, their Ace Outlaw Avenue that runs, you know, perpendicular, I mean, runs alongside of 16th Avenue. In order to accommodate what sounds like larger lots, we've cut off that and not had it connect to Sixth, I think is what that road is. Is that correct? So, yeah, Sixth Street Southeast. So it cuts it off, no, it's, 16th is above. It runs parallel to 16th, and then turns and goes south to a future unknown project, right?
May I address that?
Yes, please.
We worked with, that actually came from transportation staff with the distance separation requirements between 16th Avenue and where that access point was proposed. They actually asked us to turn that down. We are in the process of attempting to purchase the property south to connect it, and the plan would be to have a connection further south. But there was, Mike may be able to, to address that.
Maybe at the Will Scarlet Avenue access that's south of that?
Is that the direct, the, I'm going to come up.
The bottom part of the grid. This part, you know, so it'll connect to here and be that.
You got to go to the mic, ma'am, you got to, you got to go back to the mic.
Yes, ma'am, that was the intent. And when we spoke to transportation, we originally had it going all the way through, and it was at transportation's request that we did change that.
Well, it does, as a consequence of having that turn go south, it does give you the larger lots that is meeting the overall goal, but it, it doesn't necessarily address what I'm hearing is the Ruskin Plan of having all the rest of the project have smaller lots.
I think that with staff linking these two together, we did not link the two. The, we have two separate applications. Staff wanted them to be heard in conjunction because obviously they are very related and integrated. But it's not a unified plan of development. They are two separate applications. And so the standard with which you would look at the PRS is a different standard than you look at the new rezoning. This PR, the existing zoning has been, I think it's '06, it's been around for a really long time. And so as we get closer to final plat, which I think is going to come before you perhaps in April, the attempt is, how do we, as in, as we have in other developments in the Ruskin Community, how do we get a little bit closer? This isn't a brand-new PD. I don't know if you remember Spencer Creek, where we had a brand-new PD. We were reducing the number of units, and the board said, no, it doesn't meet the Ruskin Community Plan. And one of the things that we were trying to communicate is, we have situations like this where there are existing entitlements, there are vested rights for the developer, and the board at that time made it very clear to us that they don't want us coming back with new rezonings unless they meet every criteria of the Ruskin Community Plan, but that they would support us coming back for minor modifications that got us closer. We took that direction, and that's why we're here before you today, just to give you a little bit of a background.
Commissioner Overman, you deny?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize? Commissioner White, you're recognized.
The existing PD that's the subject of item H2B, what percentage of the lots would be 8,000 square feet or greater?
We don't have that percentage, Commissioner. The way that the zoning conditions were configured back when this was done is it just has a requirement for the perimeter lots to be 8,000s. And then, internal, it could be 6,000s. When we evaluated it, we recognized the fact that the number of total lots were growing. And so in trying to keep at least a status quo or moving the needle towards the direction of going in the Ruskin Plan, when the existing zoning numbers are evaluated and added to the proposed rezoning numbers, you get a 0.5% increase in the total lots that would be subject to an 8,000 square foot requirement. But that doesn't mean that it's compliant with the Ruskin Plan or within 1/2 a percent of the Ruskin Plan compliance. It just means that of the total number of lots, those numbers that would be subject to right now versus what would be subject to an 8,000 square foot requirement, if you add them all together, is that that number is moving up by 1/2 a percentage point.
Yeah. I'm gonna support Commissioner Smith's motion. I know that she put her heart and soul, she's one of the people that put their hearts and souls into developing this Ruskin Community Plan. And, you know, frankly, we've just stepped all over these community plans for far too In my experience thus far as a commissioner and speaking with staff, you know, the only way to avoid that or eliminate that is to get some of these provisions codified into the Land Development Code. We have a community in North County that's been successful in getting some of the elements of their community plan codified as such, so I think that would make an excellent topic for one of our land use policy workshops. But in the spirit of consistency with following the community plans and specifically the Ruskin Community Plan, I'm gonna support your motion.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner White. And to answer some of your questions, I don't know why it's so hard to figure out the percentage of lots. They're allowed 384 lots. They had two, that's less than 1%. They're gonna have zero, that's 0%, okay? If they were gonna have 20% of the whole area, they're gonna need 79 or 80 lots. And to your point about, yes, we do need to get more of our community plans throughout the county codified, this particular piece of the Ruskin Community Plan is codified. We worked really hard on that just a couple of years ago to get these lot size and density guidelines. These are in the LDC, carved into the stone of the LDC, the Land Development Code. So what is, what needs to happen, and I'm not asking any questions of the applicant anymore, I'm explaining. What needs to happen in order for Ruskin to develop according to this Ruskin Community Plan is to adhere to this whenever any new zonings are coming. What's starting to happen is that developers realize, oh my gosh, if we come in with what should be done here in a unified PD, bringing both of these into one plan that provides connectivity, that complies with everything in the Ruskin Community Plan, oh my gosh, then we'll have to actually comply with the Ruskin Community Plan. So they try to piecemeal these around and say, you know, in a way of avoiding the Ruskin Community Plan. So I can't support that whole strategy. But in the second place, it leaves us with the little development taking on some things. And there is, there's really no way we're going to be able to hold them to that, even if, even if we could, even if we agreed that all we wanted out of developers was to take a teensy, half a percentage step towards this one element of the Ruskin Community Plan and forget everything else that's in the Ruskin Community Plan. Even if that's all we were trying to do, I would still say, can't we do, can't we do a little better than that? And if we're going to bring this forward, can we do a little better than that in trying to do more towards the Ruskin Community Plan? More forward movement than just kind of staying the same. But certainly, this end run around the Ruskin Community Plan wouldn't even work, in my view. And so I'm sticking to my guns and happy to be having you with me. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Commissioner Smith, we have so needed you on the Board of County Commissioners, and I'm so pleased that you are so, have such depth in this particular community plan, but also I know just in the community plans around the county. And I just think it is time to kind of draw a line here that we haven't drawn, and this is, I think, as you've really cogently demonstrated, pretty far outside of any consideration for the community plan. And I know that we have violated both the spirit and the particulars of community plans for more than a decade, and it's time for us to start adhering to them. The community worked hard, I know. I was, also as Kathy Castor's aide, really involved in coming down to the community plan meetings, and I know how strong Ruskin was in particular, and how, you know, how people came out week after week, month after month, and really were committed to what they designed there. So I thank you for raising this point, and I'm proud to be your second.
Commissioner Murman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And obviously, you can see where this is headed, to denial. And, you know, I was, I was on the group that did the Gibsonson Community Plan and the Riverview, both of them, and got deeply involved in it. I drive through Gibsonson. I, I mean, it's just, and I have screamed since I've been here, why aren't we paying more attention to these community plans? Be realistic. What can we do? You know, if we're not adhering to them, then we gotta redo them, whatever. But we're not, we haven't done it, and we need to do it. I can't, how many times, Commissioner White, have I asked the plan commission to come back with a report on the community plans? Still haven't seen it, and that's probably gone on. I hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. I think the problem is, is these two got linked up. And I, and she just admitted that on staff recommendation. I absolutely would like to see, give her, give this group a chance to come back to us with a plan, with a project that does meet the standards and the guidelines. I think this board, since I've been on here, has been famous for doing that. Commissioner Miller, you know, we've sent many projects back, allowed them a chance to come back and, you know, show us that they're gonna pay attention to all those things that you and I think are important. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue this item. Don't know when the next date would be.
So we're on H2B at the moment?
I, are we, we're, this is just H2B?
Yes.
Okay, so clarify, are we not doing these two items together?
Yes, we are.
There was a motion.
There was a motion to deny H2B. Is your motion to continue H2A?
Yes. There is a motion to continue both H2A and H2B.
As a substitute motion to continue H2A and H2B, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized. Let's bring this in for landing, folks.
Yes, I still think that just continuing this PRS to try to tweak it back into something a little closer to the Ruskin Community Plan is the wrong way to go. I think if they want to do these two things together, it should be one PD. The reason not to do that is to try to avoid complying with the Ruskin Community Plan. That's the strategy, is to try to avoid compliance. If they bring it forth in one unified PD, it would have to comply with the Ruskin Community Plan, and that's what I'd like to see.
There's a substitute motion by Commissioner Murman and seconded by Commissioner Overman to continue H2A and H2B. So in a further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Kemp, Smith, and White voted no.
That continuance date then would be to the March the 12th land use meeting, that is the next land use meeting.
Is there any further business coming before us? Any further business, Ms. Moretta? Yo, any further business?
No, sir.
Seeing that, no further business, we adjourn.